Alrighty, I'd like to call this town council meeting 7:00 PM Tuesday, April 14th, 2020 to order via video teleconferencing. As I've said in other meetings, this meeting is available through live streaming on YouTube. We are accepting comments from the Cheshire residents at comments@cheshirect.org. Feel free to email comments or questions and we'll do our best to try to react to them in a live manner and address your questions or comments. With that, I'm going to go to a roll call. Arnett, are you doing roll call?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrowey?
Present.
Mr. Jinks?
Present.
Ms. Nichols? She's... Sylvia?
I'm here again.
Sorry.
Yep. No, it clicked out again.
Okay.
I don't know what the problem is, but okay, I'm here.
Mr. Slocum?
Here.
Mr. Talbot?
Here.
Mr. Veliber?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I think we're going to put up a flag, correct?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
To the Republic for which it stands, nation under God.
Indivisible. With liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So initially, we had an item for executive session, which I think we're just going to move to our, our normal new business. I don't think there's anything here that we, we can't talk about certainly publicly. So in an effort to expedite the process, we'll just skip over executive session and deal with that one item on economic incentives in our public meeting later on in new business. So with that, we're going to move on to public communications. Ms. Talbot, do you have anything?
No, we have no emails and we have received no phone comments either. So right now, we have none. I am monitoring the mailbox. If there are any, I will let you know.
Yeah, please do. And particularly if there's something appropriate to the item we're discussing at that time, feel free to let us know at that time.
I'll wait.
Certainly have no issues trying to address the, the public's comments or questions.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we're going to move on to approval of minutes for the regular meeting and public hearing of March 10th, 2020, and special meeting of April 7th, 2020.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Slocum. Are there any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to consent calendar. Mr. Barrowey?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move the consent calendar. There are items we reviewed earlier in the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Barrowey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Jinks, I think I heard that. Any questions or comments or discussion regarding the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to new business. And we're going to start with COVID-19 response update. And we have, as we have in the past, a number of our public safety and health officials online, which I'm sure each will give us a, a individual presentation to some extent, along with Sean Kimball, our town manager. If you don't mind, I'd like to start with a brief statement myself. On behalf of the entire town council, I want to assure the Cheshire community and collaboratively with our state government, state and local health officials, public safety personnel and staff to address and combat pandemic in an effort to best protect and support our residents, especially those most vulnerable, and to effectively communicate with you and with current and accurate information. We've been communicating in a unified fashion through messaging from me as the town council chairman and mayor, and Sean Kimball, our town manager. Our messaging has been and will continue to be done through postings on the Town of Cheshire website, social media, including Facebook and Twitter, numerous print media outlets as well. So we're doing our best to make sure we get this out through all of the formats that we're aware of and available. And we're certainly interested in hearing from more outlets if there are any from the public. But we're doing our best to communicate. But the point I want to make to the public is, I think it's important that we speak in a unified fashion. You can rest assured that every one of your elected officials has a seat at this table. And if there is messaging coming from me, rest assured, it's in collaboration with an input from your elected officials, the town council. I want to make sure everybody understands that. I think to have all of us giving messaging out individually could be confusing. And we just think in this crazy time, this is the best and most effective way to handle it. Our social distancing appears to be working and continues to be so important, both inside and outdoors. Playground, certainly closed parks and courts are closed. However, the linear trail and our open space areas remain open as long as social distancing is adhered to. We understand the importance of getting fresh air and exercise, but please maintain a distance of six feet minimum and avoid gathering even in small groups. You know, folks, I know it's not easy and we all feel a little bit differently about this issue, but I do think it's a small price to pay for the greater good. We all need to be doing our part. I'm in split acts of kindness and support during this difficult time and can't help but recognize our very generous and creative and compassionate residents and businesses here in Cheshire. Our deepest gratitude to all of those on the front lines, our healthcare providers, our public safety personnel, our truckers and warehouse workers, pharmacy individuals, and all who are going above and beyond to win this fight. These are crazy times, folks. We're doing the best we can. Are we perfect? Probably not. But we are working together to address this issue and protect this community and provide accurate and current information. So I appreciate your involvement, your collaboration in this, and I just want to say, stay safe and please stay well. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to, I guess, town manager Kimball. And I'm sure we'll have a number of people that would like to follow my thoughts. Thank you all.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And I'll, I'll be very brief before kicking over to the public safety officials. Just a couple of updates from our last meeting. We did have to make the decision to cancel the Memorial Day Parade. We announced that yesterday. It was a very tough decision. And again, there's a lot of uncertainty, as you just said, but unfortunately, with all the planning that goes involved and the commitments needed, right down to the practicing at the, the middle school and high school and has to do. There's just, there's too much in the lead time. Unfortunately, we needed to, to cancel. There'll be some other ceremonies and other ways that we'll be able to honor that important day and hopefully some other events later in the summer as we turn the corner, I hope on this. So to reiterate, you know, town hall remains open to the public for appointments only, but we are keeping critical business moving forward here at town hall. Senior Center and some other facilities remain closed. They are doing a lot of virtual and online programming and providing resources to residents actively. We've been spending a lot of our time trying to procure in partnership our official tier, some of our PPE needs, trying to address our PPE needs to make sure we have enough equipment here in town to, to kind of weather this storm. So we've been spending a lot of time on that. I know we'll probably hear a little bit more about that tonight. We've also suspended the rental of town facilities. They were suspended through April. We've extended that through May as we bookings that we're going to have to later cancel if, if we, if this continues as it probably will for the next few weeks. So other than that, our open space and our park areas remain open. Our open park areas, the enclosed areas are closed to the public and also the linear trail are obviously actively monitoring all of those facilities and trying to make sure that people are being responsible. But I have to say it, for the most part, they have been very responsible. So we appreciate that. Maybe with that, I'll kick it over to Jack Kazner, our Emergency Management Director and Fire Chief, for a kind of brief response update.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I've got a bulleted list. I'm just going to go through and then if we have questions or comments, I'm happy to take them after we get done. From the fire side of things, call volume is still down. We still have our limited fire responses taking place, minimizing personal contact. We do have housing responders at two locations and a third one now if we should need it. None have, we have not had a request for that to this point. PPE requested through the state is still not here. I've checked on it a couple of times today and it's in the process. I'm not sure when it's going to be here. I'm sure Maura will comment on some of the activity that she took care of today. We're on a conference calls every day with our local hospital systems or emails. The hospitals are treating the current capacity to current capacity. They have not hit serious surge levels. That includes mid-state Hartford Hospital, Hospital of Central Care. They have, they're not at a critical point right now. They have plenty of ventilators. They have ICU beds and they have regular medical beds. So we're not in, we're not in a panic mode at this point by any means. Conference calls, we are doing those dailies with the Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security. We're monitoring our internal use and inventory of PPE, which is, which is not huge number. We're, we're waiting on the state to hopefully get some more. We're monitoring the health of our staff. We have ordered no-touch thermometers for all of the, on a monitor their staffs, which we'll probably talk about in the next couple of days when they get here. We're in constant contact with our local, and Maura, Sean and I talk or email on a, at least a daily basis. Keeping our staff involved of the current cases and as we're made aware of them through Maura. As you all probably got emailed earlier, we currently have 51 with four fatalities. And that's, excuse me, that's a, a quick synopsis of where we are. One thing and a good thing. We've gotten a lot of requests to do drive-by birthday parties for kids. That this is a tough time for everybody. So we're committing to doing as much of that as, as drivers are available. We're doing as many as we can. We did one tonight. We have another one tomorrow. I understand that now there's a Facebook page that's, that's coordinating these things. So to the public, to the public, we're going to try to accommodate them as we have drivers available. But we certainly want to give some, some bright lights in these days coming ahead. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kazner. Appreciate that. And I know Chief Drife, I saw some of the police cruisers at the, want to thank you and your staff for, for following that lead as well. I think the kids really appreciate it. So thank you both for encouraging your staffs to, to support our kids. Sean?
Sorry, I muted there. I know we also have Maura and Chief on, so I think we can go to either of them for updates, Mr. Chairman.
I'll jump in if you want. From spoke last week, we're largely status quo. We have not seen a big surge in calls for service. I, I concur with your assessment that, that the social distancing, people have been very, seem to have been very cooperative. The, you know, the, the park closures and everything like that. We have put out directive to our police officers to pay attention to those areas. Again, was the, the rent of the council last week. That seems to be working well also. Again, we've, we've, we've certainly made it clear that enforcement is a last resort. We're looking for binders and, and, you know, soft enforcement, for lack of a better term. All the personnel who at various times have been out sick dealing almost exclusively with relatives who may have had contact or who've become ill, had come back to work. I was notified earlier today that I do have one person whose wife has become ill, flu-like symptoms. And so he's, they have four young children at home, so he's going to be taking some time there while she works, you know, follows her guidance about getting tested and, and things like that. But again, we have not implemented the alternate work schedule just because we in large measure, because we haven't had anybody go out sick. We certainly have had. I don't believe we've had a single police officer tested themselves as of yet. So again, you know, pretty much, pretty much status quo. I think the hardest thing for the men and women of the police department, to be honest with you, is having to turn down things like car seat installations and, you know, things like the parade. You know, it's a, it's a big event for the police department, but something that they get to showcase. We get to showcase ourselves a little bit. So it's difficult to that opportunity. But again, but between the Facebook reading of, of children's stories and participating in announcements that are going on around town, maintaining the appropriate distance, we're doing our best. And I think, I think everybody's hanging in there and we certainly appreciate of the public. You know, there isn't a big line of people trying to get into our lobby to get things done. They, you know, people are calling on the phone when they need records and, and things like that. So it's, I think the community is pulling together, which has made our lives certainly a lot easier. And, you know, I think we all look forward to the day when we can get back to the, the type of face-to-face, person-to-person contact that I think the police department is known for. And we're looking forward to that. The officers don't enjoy taking complaints, you know, speaking loudly to somebody from a, you know, 12-foot distance while they're standing on their front porch. They'd rather go in and sit down and, and, and talk to people. That's, that's the way we do business. And everybody's looking forward to getting back to that. So that is all from the police department, Mr. Chair.
Chief Drife and Ms. Esposito?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I want to apologize. I know, Arnett, my reports are getting in later and later. Just a busy, busy day and I'm trying our best to get them out in a timely manner, but it is extremely busy in our department. So I'm going to give you a little update and I hope I included some stuff I know that asked last time. So out of the 148 cases that we are following, 61 of them are now in Cheshire. Of those 61, we have 36 males and 25 females. We have a total of 43 homes. Okay? So I was trying to identify, figure out who was grouped. So we have 53 families. Of those 53 families, we did have an instance where we lost one family. We lost the mother and the father. We have outbreaks. These have resulted in five cases and one fatality. Currently, arms are doing fairly well. Elon Park has seven confirmed cases right now. We're working very closely with them. As you know, the testing is very limited, but DPH has allowed local health departments to now house testing material. So tomorrow morning, my staff is bringing down more testing material from Rocky Hill and giving it to Elon Park so that they can continue figuring out, trying to figure out where this is happening and try to. We have one retirement home. We have two cases there with one fatality. Our ages range from 16 years old to 90. So on the, looking at the, of the age groups, it's pretty much even keel across all ages for the Town of Cheshire. A particular age group that's spiking high, it's pretty consistent from 20 to 70, roughly between nine and 10 cases each age. We've had of, we, we, today, we are now up to seven people in the hospital, hospitalized that we're following up on. I included in your packets, I included some, I assume, Sean, do you send them the graphs that I send you?
We do. We try to send those daily.
Okay. So you're seeing now today, I, I added in ones, unfortunately. What are the age demographics of the fatalities? And a breakdown of the group home, nursing homes and retirement homes, because those are really where we're trying to, to focus right at this point. Today was an exciting day for us. The public health did empty out its last strategic national stockpile of PPE, of which Chesapeake was the lead. We had a very gracious business, heavyweight, Mr. Hilsinger, who lent us his box truck. Our chairman of the board, Ray Seima, drove it. And we went to North Haven where we loaded up about 10 to 12 pallets of PPE, of which we brought back to Cheshire High School. And thank you to the, for, for having security there and for Jack being there and especially the public school, because they lent their gentleman to help us unload pallets. And so the three largest health districts got the most, New Haven, Quinnipiac Valley, and mainly because they house the two hospitals. But these are not, these PPP were not meant to be distributed to the hospitals. The hospitals are getting their own supply of PPP, PPE, excuse me. These were meant for the urgent care that are not associated with a hospital. They're meant for hospice. They're meant for dialysis. They're meant for our group homes. They're, they're really meant for the low-hanging fruit of medical practitioners that aren't associated with a hospital and they can't get any PPE because the supply chain is only going to hospitals. So we are getting about two to three requests each day, especially from these home health aides. Because now these home health aides are actually going into these houses and taking care of COVID positive or presumed positive people. So DPH had sent them a notice saying that we were having this and I can say my inbox is full with requests. I do have to say that we have some really great sewers in this town. They have been very, and giving homemade masks. We also have some very brilliant children in this district that are using their 3D printers. So we're getting wonderful face masks. We received a donation of these plastic little containers that go around the masks to help the ears of the nurses. Been, as soon as we get them, we're turning them right around because we've already got all these people in our community. We've got local doctors that don't have supply chains that are waiting for us to give things. So as much as I would like to say that the PPE that we got today was great, we got a lot of extra ounce and a lot of gloves and very minimal N95s, which is of course what we need the most. But we're going to do so. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Esposito. Any questions from members of the council or comments?
May I ask? Yeah, I had a quick question. Maura, I know you're very, very busy, but one of the things I had a question about is if you could remind us the number of staff you have and how your staff is busy. Are you specifically delivering statistics? What exactly are your folks engaged in on a day-to-day basis? Just a summary, just a summary for the public.
My staff is pretty small. So is really data. Okay. Susan, Kate is to take, she downloads and works off of the computer. She downloads each of the cases. They divvy them up. So you're trying, but you're getting about what, 20 cases a day? So she splits them between Susan and her and they, we have to make contact with all these people. And to believe it or not, they're very happy to hear from people. They're home alone. We're kind of like they're linked to the outside world. So a lot of them result in me talking to Michelle, trying to get them services. They're having problems. It's almost a social service. So we're kind of playing around with that at the same rates going on in group homes. So we're divvying around, running around with equipment and trying to do epidemiology confinement with these partners. Our two sanitarians right now, they are out there trying to deal with a lot of the takeout food stuff because those regulations seem to keep evolving. So they're out there monitoring and they've been, last week, we went all the restaurants that do curbside to go over exactly what we're doing. We get quite a few little complaints of illegal activity, people that shouldn't be open and that are. We have been the ones that have been calling them and trying to get them back into compliance. So remember, we're doing this for three communities. So there's not a lot of us and spread pretty thin.
As a follow-up, if I may, are your resources, and I mean the financial ones strained? I mean, how are you addressing that or can it be addressed down the line?
We're going into our, we really haven't been able to purchase anything, if you think about it. This is all stockpiled that we had or we've been donated because there is nothing to purchase. So in that respect, we're not doing any of that. As far as salaries operating like we are, we are going, starting to go into reserves. So I'm sure all of you know that we were trying to purchase a building that has been put on hold because we don't know where we're going to end up financially from this. And we're watching, you know, our board meets. We haven't been meeting. I canceled our meeting this week because we are just really focused on COVID right now. But I did hand them all our financials and we're still stable, just like everybody else, but we're probably going to lose.
So, Mr. Slocum?
I am indeed, and I.
Mr. Walsh?
Thank you. Maura, just the PPE that you received today. If there was somebody in our town who needed a mask for something to go to the doctors or if they need, is that something that they can contact get from you or?
So what I've said before, and I've been working with social services, is really trying to emphasize the fact that on how to get creative, how to make a homemade mask, because the supplies are really low. I did donate a few boxes to social services for those seniors that can't seem to make a mask. So I've been working with Stephanie down there. So they have SAR masks. There's not a lot to go around. We really need to save them for the medical people. We have nurses that literally their masks, they get one face mask a week. They're asked to take it off, side out and store it into a plastic bag. And that is not very safe at all. So we really need to keep those medical people where they are, especially we're seeing a peak in the ICUs. We need those medical people there and we need them safe.
So basically, if anybody needs anything, they should probably go through the social services and hopefully they can.
And I, me is working with several seniors who are sewers as well and asking everybody to get creative. There's been a lot of people that want to do a lot of help in this community, as you know. So I know that she's been really working hard on that.
Thank you, Maura.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other questions or comments for Maura? More quick items. Are you hearing from the hospitals, any drugs that they're using?
They don't really talk about that on the calls. I'll be honest with you. A lot is going, the better will be.
Right. Thank you. Well, thank you to all of you who are on the front lines. We owe you a lot of gratitude, Maura. Please thank your staff for all they're doing and obviously Chief Drife and, and Chief Kazner to your staffs. Obviously, as you all know, the town staff is working tirelessly as well between Sean Kimball and Arnett Talbot and all the staff. I appreciate everything. And I think the community needs to know how hard you are all working on their behalf. So thank you to all of you for being with us on a regular basis to give. Team, we're going to move on to a 9B, which is discussion and possible approval of the economic incentive for viral osteria. Mr. Barrowey?
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that we've previously been prized of by Mr. Sitko and he is with, put the motion on the floor and then ask him if he can just give us a quick synopsis, if that's okay with you?
That would be great.
We have the town council approves the tax incentive for VD NKR Inc. for virin rondo osteria. 1641 Highland Avenue, Cheshire, under the terms as presented. It's the town manager to execute an agreement by and between the Town of Cheshire and VD NKR Inc. for said incentive. Second.
Barrowey, Slocum, Mr. Barrowey or Mr. Sitko, whoever would like to give us a bit of background on this?
Yeah, this is, we've, we've had an update on this for the executive session because it was a, a matter that we were considering. And it goes along with the other plans that we have done for, as an incentive for the people that do expansion, some of their businesses and add significantly to our tax base. And Jerry's got the numbers to let us know what we were receiving and then the amount that we're abating as well. Jerry, I know, I saw your name, so I know you're on.
I am. Thank you very much. VR Osteria, VR Osteria really needs no introduction. You know, you know about the, the restaurant off of 1721 Highland Avenue. Mr. Rondo opened his restaurant here in 2014. He, the original building with 5,300 square feet, just recently nearly doubled his building. He added on 400 square feet. Mr. Rondo has asked for tax assistance from the town under the tax incentive program. The assessor, assessor ran the math for us and based on the way we do our current. The assessor ran the math for us and based on the way we do our current assessment, tax assessment agreements, we'll take 50% of the addition, just the addition, the building, not the land, not the personal property, the portrait, the patio, but just the bill. Mr. Rondo, the tax break over four-year period would be worth $94,300 to Mr. Rondo during that period, the town would gain a like amount. I may add that Mr. Rondo and his location estimated at the time that, you know, at the completion of the building, he would have over $500,000 in personal property and that is exactly the case. What we have on the books for Mr. Rondo now is $5,7,629 of personal property and $1,500 a year. I've talked this over and told the Economic Development Commission that application, tax, this application for tax relief is coming and they have no objection. Mr. Rondo is also a significant employer in town. He has about 40 full-time people employed and well over 20 people employed in part-time basis at his, at his facility. So that's it in a nutshell. I don't know questions, but I am here and I'd be glad to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Sitko. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, obviously, you know, this is a program that's available to all of our businesses in the area. So to me, this is a no-brainer. Mr. Rondo, as, as many other businesses in town have continued to commit to our community, support our community and invest heavily in our community. And this is a way we provide some economic benefits back to them to support their endeavors. And again, it's, it's only taking a portion of the incremental increase in taxes based on the assessments, which is about 50%. So, you know, the taxpayers are making out and it's a good incentive that's in line with a lot of other communities in the state of Connecticut. We need competitive to attract and maintain businesses. This is just another effort on our behalf to, to stay competitive and to let our businesses know how important they are to this community. So if I don't see any other questions or comments, I'll just call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Sitko for attending. We appreciate your update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to 9C, discussion and possible approval of bid waiver for $26,400 to hire Silver Petraselli to design bid and administer the next round of Doolittle bathroom renovation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be it resolved, the town council approves the bid waiver, excuse me, be it resolved, the town council approves resolution 041420-3. Be it resolved, the town council approves a bid waiver for the second phase of the district-wide lavatory upgrade project for Doolittle School and further authorizes the Public Building Commission to hire Silver Petraselli for the design bidding and construction for said project for $26,400. Second.
Mr. Slocom, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Nichols. Mr. Slocom?
At the February 26th, 2020 meeting, the PBC recommended that Silver Petraselli and Associates be granted a bid waiver and awarded a contract for negotiated fee of $26,400. This is based on their satisfactory performance of previous phases of the project, their knowledge of the facility and their ability to standardize the design and materials. These are those words, Malong. I, I accept them as given.
Thank you, Mr. Slocom. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Ms. Nichols?
I just want to correct that. Peter Talbot was the one who seconded.
I thought I saw your hand up. My apologies, Mr. Talbot. Get spread it.
I was throwing my voice into the, to Councilwoman Nichols' square there.
I just wanted to be sure if the proper person got the credit.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And D, discussion of possible authorization to issue an RFP for construction for a pre-cast bathroom building at Quinipiac Park.
Be it resolved, the town council approves resolution 041420-4. Be it resolved, the town council author, Building Commission to issue an RFP for construction of a pre-cast bathroom building at Quinipiac Park.
Thank you, Mr. Slocom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Slocom?
Well, the short story is they want to, they want to locate, they want to locate a facility like away from the other facility and closer to some of the other fields. They saw this as a good option to keep. There's been some preliminary conversations about it and they just want to go out and, you know, get some more detail on it and move forward with it. I'm sure by the time it's assembled, there'll be toilet paper in it. So I, that's basically the gist of all this.
Thank you, Mr. Slocom. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Seeing none, obviously, this is a big, and I know that that end of town, the users of that facility and certainly our comrade, Mr. Rocco was advocating for this before he decided to. So, Mr. Rocco, I hope you're watching, you know, hopefully approving this shortly for your constituents in that area. I think it's certainly some, it is a long walk for those that are on one end of the facility to get to the other. And I think it's something that's going to be good for, for that park. So looking forward to advancing this as well. This is just another endeavor on, on behalf of this council investing into our parks and the areas that are serving our community. We've done a lot, as we've said in the past, with the land acquisition and preservation. Now we're, we're making sure that we invest in maintaining and upgrading our facilities. This is just another example of that. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion unanimously. Thank you. We're going to move on to 9D or 9E, discussion and possible approval of reallocation of an additional $95,000 for library roof.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, this is a important bill right of it and I will read the beginning part of the motion.
I didn't, I didn't finish the items.
I'm sorry. Oh.
I don't know if I, yeah, I'm sorry. If you're just finishing it so everyone knows what we're talking about.
Sorry, I not hearing all that well.
So it's a discussion and possible approval of reallocation of an additional $95,000 for a library roof in HVAC replacement from existing appropriation to be used for both roof and HVAC use in a ward construction contract deal roofing. Mr. Bari?
Sorry, sir. I did not quite hear the whole thing. This is a great opportunity for us to show that we are good stewards of our money. And if it isn't needed for one part of something, it can be certainly used for another. And this is an important building. So is playing favorites and gave Tim a short motion for his last one. And this one's rather long, but I'm only going to read the first part of it. Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution 041420-5. Resolution amending a resolution entitled resolution appropriating $225,000 for library roof replacement authorized of $225,000 bonds for the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose and amending a resolution entitled resolution appropriating $75,000 for library HVAC replacements and authorizing the issue of $75,000 bonds for the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, et cetera, et cetera.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bari. Thank you, Mr. Slocom. Mr. Bari?
This, as you said in the introduction, this is allowing some funds to be repurposed within the same type of project. And I think it's great news when we are able to have parts of project come in under and repurpose the money to not have to go out and find new funds to be able to do objects that are needed and to maintain our buildings. And this is a very well-used building in town and it's important to keep it maintained and in, in shape that we as Cheshire residents deserve to have our library. I don't know if Sean or I don't know who else might be on here. I don't see all the pictures.
George is on.
George is on. Okay, I don't see all the pictures here. If you want to elaborate a little bit?
I couldn't say it anymore, any better, Mr. Bari. It's a well-used, this will replace seven HVAC units that are 24 years old that are on the roof and at the end of their useful life. And a good solid roof and a good solid HVAC system for many years to come.
George, obviously, it's budget season and you're sucking at your chin. Good job.
Absolutely.
Thank you, George. Yes, Mr. Jinx?
Array, is that, was that an operable one at that? I mean, was it not being used for anything, the solar array? Or is it just, just out of curiosity?
Sure. The, the, that's the old solar array that the Energy Commission received as a, I guess, a gift for, for doing good energy efficiency projects years ago. I want to say it was put up there in 2005 or '06. So it's just about at the end of its useful life.
Okay.
It only, it's 5.6 kilowatts or something along those lines. So it's, it, it's not cost-effective to put it back on the roof. But the town could, could certainly look at a more elaborate solar array up on that roof in the future if the council so chose to go that route.
Oh, there would still be roof up there?
Yep. The, yeah, still be, be up there available.
And what was that? The energy source was going into the library, I guess?
Yeah, correct. It was just backfeeding the existing meter that's in there.
Right. Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nwantney. Thank you, Mr. Jinx. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. I believe 9F is not ready for prime time, correct, Mr. Kimball? So we're going to table this for now?
That's correct. We're waiting on some additional information from the architect. So he just wasn't ready for tonight, Raj. Hopefully can do it next week.
Okay, great. We'll move on to 9G, discussion regarding the reassignment of Public Building Commission capital projects. Mr. Slocom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town council approves resolution 041420-7. Be it resolved, the town council reassigns the following Public Building Commission capital projects to the Board of Education or town staff as indicated. I'll first enumerate the Board of Education. Unit ventilator replacements at Norton School, underground storage tank replacements, Doolittle and Darcy, HVAC improvements at Highland School, window replacement to Cheshire High School projects, technology town and school security projects with the assistance from Apex, our technology consultants, state grade at Cheshire High School, HVAC improvements at Dodd School, Middle School and boiler replacement at Doolittle School. To Public Works, we're going to move with the town hall roof replacement and to town staff, again, with assistance from Apex, the technology town and school projects.
Thank you, Mr. Slocom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
I think that was Mr. Walsh. Thank you, Mr. Slocom.
Well, basically, this has been done to essentially economize process. It was deemed after some discuss and staff that this was an appropriate measure to make things move a little faster. That's the synopsis and I think it's fair.
Yep. Great. Thank you, Mr. Slocom. Any questions or comments from members of the council? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Move on to 9H, which is discussion of possible action regarding the adoption of property tax deferment program or the low interest rate program as authorized by the governor's executive order 7S. Mr. Bari?
Good. I didn't tear jump the gun that time. Item that was reviewed by the Budget Committee earlier, I'd like to put a motion on the floor and then speak to it. Be it resolved that the town resolution 041420-8, be resolved that the town council, per Governor Lamont's executive order number 7S, as presented and attached, approves the town of Cheshire's participation in the state Connecticut's suspension and modification of tax deadlines and collection efforts, both programs.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bari. I apologize. I did not see who seconded that.
Peter, I think.
Oh, Mr. Talbot, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bari?
The Budget Committee met earlier and discussed this and we got the finance director, but the cost would be in lost revenue, in interest. And of course, with the low interest rates right now, if we were to agree to the portion that would change the low interest rates from 1.5% per month as allowed by law to a quarter of a percent per month for 90 days. This is that would have the opportunity to have a lower amount for those, that short time period. And the estimated loss of revenue to the town, if it did happen this way, $1,000. The deferment program allowing people to have a grace period of 90 days instead of 30 days. So now taxes would be due October 1 rather than August, I guess, 3rd because of the way the calendar falls this year. Gives them an extra time. So the revenue would be coming in mainly in September from residents who pay the taxes. But those who are escrowed through their banks, banks are still mandated to make those payments. So our cash flow would not be hurt in terms of us still having enough cash to meet our obligations. But it would defer some of the cash that we would expect to receive in July would be received in September. But it would not put to the point where we would have to do some short-term borrowing or would be doing extraordinary measures to pay our bills. And the revenue that gets deferred that little bit that we might have invested for that short time period, really, the, the amount of interest we might have gained from that was judged to be almost negligible by the finance director. So we were in favor of offerings to our residents as our way of being able to try to help in a way that we can with the economic devastation that is facing many people because of this pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Bari. And I see we have Mr. Jaskot. Would you like to add?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think Dave, you summarized that really well. And Mr. Horace, you, you know.
We're all sucking up to the budget share tonight.
At a time of year.
I, it asked me last week to take a look at how this might affect our cash flow. And I just want to say that, you know, we did look at in the Budget Committee, you know, and I spent some time with our collective revenue, Bill Donlan, to, to project, I think, pretty, pretty accurately where, what, what effect this would have on us. And I'm very comfortable that this, this additional 60 days or the deferment program, which, you know, again, July, we, we collect close to $50 million worth of taxes. So it, you know, did warrant some consideration and taking a close look at what effect that would have. But between the, the escrow payments or not participating in this program and, and we'll probably, I'm projecting we'll get like close to 17 million in July for those payments. In fact, that these, these tax payments are going to be late at first. So the bulk of our taxes, we're going to get by the end of September. So it's really just pushing it out. And if they're late, if they're late and they don't make that October 1 deadline, they're going to owe all the interest that they would normally owe for the full period. So I don't see any just revenue at all really on the deferment program. And on the, on the reduction of interest program, just to reiterate, it's, it's probably going to be about 25,000 for our delinquent accounts. And that's going to be for a period from April 1st to June, where they would get a lower interest rate. And again, if they, if they don't make a payment during that time period, then, then that won't apply to them at all. And they, they're going to have to pay the full amount that they normally would. So I think these, you know, from a cost perspective, both of these programs are something that we can accommodate to give the taxpayers some flexibility this year without too much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did want to mention that I was disconnected for a brief period of time. And I believe both programs were put on the table. We've talked about both. That is correct, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. The other thing I need to discuss, but this is an application process. Is that correct? Everyone's clearly understands that the, the resident would have to fill out an application with the, with the assessors or the tax office?
So I can, I can speak. So the way the executive order is written, it does, yes, contemplate a application process as a default and that you would have to, as a taxpayer, test to the impact that you've had from COVID, from a loss of income due to the COVID pandemic. In our discussions, it is given as an opportunity, as a possibility that communities can just go ahead and extend this to everyone. That's something that we have recommended frankly, from a, both a practical standpoint and from just seeing of those applications and handling that level of paperwork and confirmation and due diligence. But further, just the reality that it's going to be sort of challenging to, from in this environment, who's backed by the COVID pandemic than others. That was sort of our analysis of that. And Jim, that was a sort of the staff recommendation.
Okay, so just for clarification, this is basically a blanket thing. Will it be explained in our tax documentation that go to tax bills? It'll be a little footnote that you have up to 90 days to defer this. It'll be a little footnote that you have up to ninety days to defer this grace period we'd like to use. Or how are we going to handle that? Or is that too far forward to think about this, or the answer at this point?
We can, we can do that.
So, uh, Donlin, our, uh, Collector of Revenue in the, in the room with me, maybe he can chime in on, on, uh, question.
Our, our swap is offered to municipalities. If, if the vendor is going to print any literature detailing what they're going to be doing, they will include that each one of our mailings for the month of, uh, June, July. So the, uh, taxpayers would be notified in the same bill, in the same mailing that their tax bill will be coming, the programs that you would offer to them.
Could everybody hear that okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was a good answer. Good conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slokum. Ms. Nichols, did you have something?
Uh, well, those were the questions that I were, was going to ask if it was available to everyone. I fully support it, and I think it's a very good way to, uh, help anybody who needs it struggling because of this. Um, but I wasn't clear that it was going to be available to all the taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
And if I could just jump in there, Mr. Chairman, that, that, uh, we were discussing this earlier. And obviously, this has been moving very quickly. Uh, when the resolution was put together, it doesn't specify, I think, to, to the points that both Tim and Sylvia are making. Uh, and if you wanted to entertain sort of an amendment to that resolution that does just officially, if that's the direction the council wants, I think that would, that would sort of help us rather than having to come back and, and confirm that later. So that's up for discussion.
I would be happy to make the motion to, uh, include words to the effect of, "M" is available to all residents as they may be enabled or entitled.
I think Attorney Smith.
Or qualify, I guess.
Yeah.
Attorney Smith, would you like to add something?
Yeah, to, uh, reaffirm the idea that it, it would take, uh, an intentional act by the council to extend the eligibility to all taxpayers. So I think that, that the amendment is necessary.
Well, I, I think we should be extending it to everybody. I think it's going to be a logistical nightmare to try to have people file for another application on something when so many are already filing for things and, and a tough time. I'm not sure we want to pile on at this point. And I don't think the difference is going to make, uh, a, a big deal for us cash flow wise from what we're hearing from Mr. Dafka. I, I am happy to support this for all of our residents and businesses.
All right, if you forgot on there, uh, Mr. Chairman, could we ask the second or to agree? And then it would be part of the motion.
Second.
Um, good, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jenks. Um, are there any other further questions or comments on this? Seeing none, so to be clear, we're, we're approving both options that the governor provided for us under this Executive Order seven S, um, to be most flexible for our taxpayers. And we're allowing it to be accessed by all of our taxpayers. Um, so I think that's pretty clear. Uh, Mr. Talbot, something? Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I'll call for a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Barrie. Thank you, Mr. Jaskot, uh, for that information. Appreciate it. Um, on to nine, I, Discussion of Possible Approval of Multi-Year Site License Agreement with AT&amp;T Corp. for Cell Tower at seven fifty-one Higgins Road. Uh, Mr. Barrie?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is a subject of an item we received an update motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Town Council approves Resolution zero four one four two zero dash nine. Be resolved that the Town Council authorizes the execution of a five-year site license agreement between AT&amp;T Corporation and the Town of Cheshire for the town's lease of AT&amp;T Corporation property at seven fifty-one Higgins Road for construction, operation, maintenance, repair, and removal of mobile slash wireless communications equipment and facilities up to the terms as presented and attached pursuant to the approval by the Town Attorney as to form and function.
Second.
Mr. Barrie, uh, second from who?
Mr. Slokum.
Thank you, Mr. Slokum. Uh, Mr. Barrie?
Yes, Mr. Jay, from the chief, this is part of our updating of our communication system. And we have a very favorable terms in this lease. And, uh, uh, Don was to have us approve this. And then we can go forward with trying to find the other necessary locations to improve our, uh, communications as well. As part of that's been upgraded and worked on for quite a while now to have the, uh, necessary high-end, high-quality communicators need.
Thank you, Mr. Barrie. Uh, Chief Drive, would you like to add something?
Uh, I would, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, you'll recall that at the, uh, uh, February meeting of the council, uh, we approved a lease agreement for, uh, Summit Road, uh, the Summit Road site with a different company. Um, the original, uh, draft proposal from eighteen included a monthly lease cost of two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. And, uh, it was the council's direction that we seek a reduction in that amount. Um, we, uh, I wrote a letter to them, uh, immediately following that meeting. And it took them about two months, but last week we were notified that they were willing to provide us with a seventy-five percent, uh, reduction on that for a total of seventy dollars a month for the lease. Uh, you'll recall that in addition to that, there are some utility costs. Uh, the reason that we're not ready to move forward completely, um, without the caveat that the, uh, Town Attorney proved the final language is because they, uh, AT&amp;T and their proposal, they reduced the lease amount from two thousand nine hundred and eighty to seven hundred and fifty dollars. But then they threw some additional language in there, um, that, and we were unclear as to exactly what that meant. Um, we are, we're, we're hoping that, uh, they will, uh, still honor their, uh, five hundred and seventy dollar per utility costs and, uh, that at this point we'll be done with that. But it wasn't clear in the new language that they proposed that had the decrease in the lease amount there. So that's what we're, that's what we're waiting for, uh, for the, uh, one of Mr. Smith's colleagues is working on that. Um, and, uh, we received an update from him, uh, late this afternoon. But the update was that AT&amp;T had not gotten around to having their internal discussion about the, uh, language changes that he was requesting in their, uh, latest lease.
Thank you, Chief Drive. Uh, Attorney Smith, anything?
No, I will, I will be, uh, following up with Chief Drive to, uh, to get the, the most current information, review the, uh, review the document and, uh, and report back.
Okay, so we're going to approve this subject to your final review and approval. Actually, you know, we do not, I don't think we're going to want to have that utility item open-ended, uh, so that we don't know the cap cost on that. So I assume we're, we're approving the subject to that confirmation, correct?
Could I raise a question?
Yes, Mr. Slokum, please do.
Um, since we don't really know, is the same sensitive nature to this? That we should vote on this with a caveat?
Yes, we're going to vote on it tonight. I'm, I assume we're going to vote unless there's a motion not to. And there is a time-sensitive nature to this, as I know. And Chief, you can certainly, uh, opine further. But it's my understanding we need to get this started in order to test it properly during certain times of the year to make sure it's operational as we need it, i.e., we can test it when the trees are in full bloom so that we know at a time when the trees are, you know, fully vegetated. And, uh, correct, Chief, if you want to expand on that?
Yeah, September thirtieth is the date that the project team at Motorola recommends, um, for what they call acceptance testing, which is exactly what you said. What that entails is have, putting a Town of Cheshire employee in a car that has a mobile radio in it and a portable radio in their hand, dive around to various parts of town and physically testing the reception of the radio system. Apparently that is, uh, affected greatly by foliage. So if we wait until the late fall without falling off the trees, we could get a, almost a false positive. We could, we could get a, uh, a report back that we have coverage that is much, uh, much stronger than we actually have if we test it while the leaves are still. The length of time that AT&amp;T has taken, uh, with this has delayed any work, obviously, at their site on Higgins Road. And, uh, the reason that we, that we asked for this to go on this agenda tonight, um, with the caveat is that we didn't, I realize we have a series of, we have, have taken it there, but we certainly didn't want to have to wait until the regular May meeting to get the approval. Uh, once the lease is signed, there are, um, there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work still going on. And the subcontractors that Motorola has hired will be ready to go. And our feeling was that, uh, we didn't want to wait until, uh, until the regular May meeting, uh, to get everything finalized. But, uh, look, I understand your concerns. I'm not looking to, to pay any more than that five hundred and seventy dollars. The, just so you're aware, the language appeared to allow the town to negotiate lower, um, utility costs if we were able to do that. But again, it wasn't clear that we would be allowed to then stay on AT&amp;T's backup generator and stuff. So we might, for example, we could have, maybe we could have negotiated with ever source and got a slightly lower, uh, the, or, you know, kilowatt hour rate for the electricity. But if on top of that, then we have to bring in our own generator to the site and pay for that. Um, it, you know, would, it would very quickly offset. Our preference would be that AT&amp;T honors the original five hundred and seventy dollar per month, uh, utility cost. You may recall that's a hundred and ninety dollars per month, uh, per cabinet. And we have three equipment cabinets that'll be located at the AT&amp;T site. And then the seven hundred and fifty dollar monthly lease on top of it. Again, that's a, a significant reduction in what we brought you in, in February. And again, it's just the way that, they didn't just change the lease cost. They made other changes in the language that Attorney McLaughlin from, uh, from Mr. Smith's office was not comfortable with. That's what we're, we're, we're waiting, um, for the clarification on it. Look, certainly, if they come back and say, oh, no, the, the utility costs are now going to go up by three hundred dollars, then, you know, we wouldn't, you know, we certainly wouldn't act on that without first coming back to the council. But again, we don't believe that is, that's what they're, what they're doing. It's just the, the, the change is unclear to us.
I appreciate your response, Chief. It's very fulsome, uh, and I just wanted the public to be, be aware of it because we're making a vote on something. Perfect sense. Um, but I wanted that clarity. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Slokum. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously. Thank you, Chief Drive, uh, and Attorney Smith for your input on that. Uh, we're going to now move on to the Town Manager Report and Communications. Uh, Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm going to be very brief tonight. A lot of my, um, kind of already went over a little bit with the COVID update earlier on. Um, obviously, COVID's been, uh, ninety to ninety-five percent of what we've been doing over the last, uh, few, uh, weeks. Um, but I did want to say just, uh, some appreciation to, and not only our, our town employees, but also to you, the Town Council, who've been, uh, very, as well as we've, we've tried to navigate these new, um, uh, processes and procedures, uh, including these, these virtual meetings. And I think we're, uh, we're making improvements where we can. And, and I appreciate everyone's flexibility as we've tried to find new ways to do business. Um, and really with that, I just want to remind folks that, uh, we are in the middle of the budget process. We started with our first budget workshop last night. Um, we have upcoming budget, uh, meetings are all available on our website. The next two are on April twenty-first and April twenty-second. Uh, we have a public hearing for the public to, uh, provide additional comment and feedback, get some questions April twenty-eighth. But, um, that, that opportunity is also available, uh, really with, with the way we have these virtual meetings set up as well. So, um, just, uh, I wanted to reiterate that. And again, uh, that's really going to be the extent of my report, uh, for tonight.
Thank you, uh, Town Manager Kimball. Um, with that, we have no miscellaneous. We'll move on to, uh, Liaison Report.
I think there's a question from, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh.
Thank, thank you. I just had one quick question, Sean. Um, if, it, would it be possible at our next meeting if we could bring in your Jerry Sitketa or both of them to discuss the economic impact this is having on, on especially our, our small businesses, non-essential businesses that had a town completely? Because I get concerned about some of the smaller businesses that may go under. And, um, I think it's important for us to see where we are and what's going on with that.
Sure, we'd be happy to do that. We also can, can give an update on some of the efforts that they've been doing. Um, I know Jerry's been going around and trying to make sure that the businesses have a lot of information, uh, and some of the opportunities that are out there. You do both. Um, but that definitely helps take that back and, um, we can do that for the next meeting.
Well, thank you. I, I, I just, uh, with, with the PPP loans that the banks are offering, there's, there's a lot of pickups in, in, in that as well. And I'm sure a lot of these businesses are running into the same roadblocks. And, and I just get concerned about, you know, we could see a lot of empty buildings, uh, in businesses if things don't change soon.
I, I had a question.
You, Mr. Walsh, and my apologies. I, I didn't offer up questions and comments, uh, Mr. Slokum.
Yeah, my question, Sean, was, um, how things are going with staff at home? I, I know we've talked about that a couple of times, but now we're into, uh, I forget the week. Is, is everything working out well? And they're all able to do their thing and you're, you're happy? They're happy?
Yeah, I think it's still, you know, somewhat of a work in progress, but we've, we've entered into a pretty good rhythm, uh, with folks that are able to work from home. I think we also have a number of folks that are frankly here, uh, at Town Hall specifically. I think if you drive by, uh, and you'll see a number of cars in the lot. Um, we've been, been good about keeping, uh, social distancing and keeping, uh, the building clean. Um, and I think people are certainly being safe. And then we're, we're doing our best though, because it's very important to us to continue to operate to the extent we can. Uh, um, yeah, I mean, I think certainly there's been case-by-case situations where we've tried to address and improve, uh, the ability for folks to work from home, um, alternating shifts and alternating schedules and, and being available, uh, to respond by phone, uh, and, and call back constituents and, and residents directly. Um, so largely, I think it, it, it has, you know, I think we're, uh, as you said, we're sort of entering the next phase of this and we're projecting out, uh, you know, our ability to continue that, um, for the longer term. And so I think we're, uh, we're constantly reevaluating and, and trying to decide what to do, uh, with the, with the staff going forward.
The questions or comments? And just to follow up on, on Mr. Slokum, um, I, I, I think the council would certainly appreciate on and on. Uh, obviously, we're working hard to try to support all of our staff for as long as we can. But we also need to make sure that, uh, they're working, uh, and they have stuff to do and that they're being productive, uh, with taxpayer dollars. So, you know, that's a balancing act that we need to address and face, uh, depending on how long this thing goes. So I think it's important, Sean, that you, you continue this dialogue with the council so that we can, you know, be prepared to be able to act one way or another becomes appropriate.
Absolutely, yeah. And we're also, uh, all of our departments have prepared, uh, sort of work-at-home plans and, and also, um, you know, remote operation plans. So we, we'd be happy to, to kind of consolidate those into a larger document. And, uh, I'm sharing that with the council too, to kind of keep you updated on, uh, so you can have a little comfort with where we are now and where we see our, our operations going in the future.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. So now we'll move on to twelve miscellaneous and appointments. Liaison report. Uh, I'm just going to go by the boxes. I feel like we're the Brady Bunch, the way this looks with all the boxes. So I'm going to start at my lower right corner. Mr. Slokum?
Uh, I have, I have no report. Uh, I have not been liaising, liaising.
Uh, you have not. Ms. Nichols?
I have not.
No liaising in this part either.
Mr. Talbot?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walsh?
No report, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Barrie?
No report, sir.
Mr. Velver?
No report.
And Mr. Jenks? No report?
No report.
I think I got everybody right. Uh, appointments to boards and commissions, uh, Ms. Nichols, anybody?
Not this time.
Mr. Talbot?
There is, uh, Mr. Chair, in the packet, there's, um, three, um, corrections to appointments that I believe were made at the previous meeting.
Uh, there are, there are corrections to the mark ten.
Uh, yes, they are. They were addressed corrections. You're correct, Peter. Um, and I don't have that right in front of me.
I, I, I can handle it. Uh, they're following corrections to the mark ten, twenty twenty regular Town Council meeting. Appointment of Joseph Casella Junior, address should be eight Brigadoon Drive. Appointment of, uh, Signion McGarry, political affiliation should be unaffiliated. And appointment of W. Dennis Flag, address should be four forty-one Sharon Drive. So we're just correcting the record with those three.
Okay.
Is that your understanding of Talbot?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't know if those need to be, um, and aren't that, you can do with a head nod, but do those need to be seconded or are those just good to go the way they are?
I think they're in the record and they're good to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, move on to thirteen, Town Board and Communications, Attorney Smith?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Council Communications, uh, I have nothing to me. Any, have any letters or anything they'd like to, uh, address?
Nope.
Okay, then with that, uh, we are on to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Second.
Um, I saw Mr. Walsh in the second. Mr. Velver? I see no conversation on this. I'll call for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for watching. Uh, hopefully you found us informative tonight. We do have some kinks in our process, as you now know, through this telecommunications. But hopefully we'll get it better with each meeting we have. Uh, good night, stay safe, and be well.